Should we move to the next question? Okay. This is regarding city council staff relationship. It appears that rather than the city council and the mayor, it is the -- pardon me. Yes, I understand. It appears that rather than the city council and the mayor, it is the city manager, the city attorney, and the city staffers who are the tail that is wagging the dog. There is also a growing concern in the community regarding the credibility of staff reports, data, and recommendations to the council. How do you plan to address this obvious disconnect between community opinions and staff recommendations? How would you verify the accuracy of information presented in staff reports before making decisions regarding the future of the airport? If you feel that city staff is not responsive to council directives, what would you do? Any thoughts about replacing the airport manager, city attorney, or other staff? One and a half minutes. Okay, Robert, and then Frank, Jerry.
Well, how do we plan to address the obvious disconnect between community opinions and staff recommendations? That's why so many of us are running for city council this year. From our perspective, and it's our responsibility, we've seen that same disconnect, and it crosses beyond airport issues. It's gotten to the point where life is becoming untenable. And I think all of us here, I think if you've seen -- one issue we agree on is closing the airport if possible. That's sort of brought us together. But it's our responsibility to do that, and we don't know what the reason is. We don't know if it's economic, if there's unknown liabilities the city has where they're trying to raise tax revenue. There's a lot of speculation and no knowledge on the part of the grassroots people. I think it's up to the city council members, or it's up to the candidates to try and get a majority of grassroots people on the podium, so that we start voting the way the community wants us to vote. I think we need to verify the accuracy of the information presented in staff reports by talking to experts in the field, take advantage of our universities that are in the area, take advantage of professionals in the area, try to evaluate where the games are being played and where the objectivity is. If the city staff isn't responsive, and they come back a second time and things aren't better, I say get rid of staff and hire people that want the jobs and will do the jobs for us. And any thoughts about replacing the manager, the city attorney, and other staff? Yes. That's all I can say. But I think I share those opinions with a lot of the people that are running for city council this year. Thank you.
Frank?
Well, these issues really get into the issues about the litigation as well, and how you litigate, because basically litigation is also a matter of negotiating, as anybody would tell you. You only litigate when you can't negotiate. And you have to figure out what the other side always wants to get that. Now, what we -- and you can't negotiate against yourself. It's like always a big problem. Now, there's going to be litigation in this case, because even if we try to take down the just the quitclaim parcel, the FAA is going to litigate, because that's what they do. Their issue is to keep airplanes running, airports running. So to influence them, we have to have a very strong position. And what I objected about what staff did in this whole visioning process is they began a visioning process without finding out what the legal rights were. And I wrote a lot about this. I'm not going to read my column about it, but the point is, you can't do that. You don't start negotiating against yourself by saying, "Well, we're not sure we have what, we don't know what our rights are, so let's see if we can live with having a bad set of rights." Now, about staff, you have to also understand what the staff -- I'm proud to have the endorsement of the coalition of staff unions. You have to understand where staff's coming from. These people, their lives are the airport. And it's not necessarily Rod Gould, I don't know what Rod Gould thinks about it, but his staff, his people are saying that this is what we do. So if you want to close the airport and get the staff on your side, you have to say, "Look, there's going to be a better thing there that you can work on. There's going to be a really interesting park. There's going to be -- if you want to just do aviation, you may have to go somewhere else, but there's going to be other stuff. There's going to be all the stuff we've talked about, that there are going to be jobs there for you to do." Okay, stop. Anyway, I think it's --
Thank you. That was Frank Gruber. Tony? Aimee?
Yes, Tony Vasquez. You know, one of the things that we all need to understand is how the city works. When I was on the council, we -- and it's still in effect today, the city council has three employees: the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. And if they're not preparing the reports that are accurate and giving us the right information as council members, they need to go. And it's happened before, and it should happen again if that's what's happening now with these reports that are coming back from staff about the issue of whether we close it or we don't close the airport. And one of the things we need to do as elected officials, whoever's sitting on that council, needs to make that strong message to the city manager, because then the city manager directs the staff to prepare the reports the way they want it to go. And that's what's happening. And obviously, what's happened up to this point hasn't been a strong message, otherwise the staff reports coming back to the council would have a different message.
I just want to point out that Tony's speaking from his experience on the council. He's not just throwing accusations there, so I suspect his knowledge base is unique in regard to the candidates up there. I just had to throw that out there. Jerry was next, and then John Smith, and then John Man, Steve Doran, and Gleam Davis.
Well, you know, I say this somewhat jokingly. I go to more council meetings than some of the council members themselves. It's a matter of responsibility, and they're interesting. I like our city staff. I like our city manager, too. I've seen great staff reports on a lot of things, and Rod Gould's done a great job in a lot of areas. This issue is rough. I know it was kind of a defensive thing, but I don't think that this got off on the right foot with the visioning process. It should never have been excluded from the loose process. That was a bad thing, and that should be bought back again. I think ultimately it comes down to, someone said this before, our activism. It's up to us to make the difference. Neighborhood groups have to work with concerned residents against airport pollution even tighter. We need to hold everybody accountable, and that's it. If I were on the council, if I saw a staff report that I felt was, needed some more thought, I'd speak out. I'd speak out to any staff person or even the city manager. So ultimately, it is up to us as grassroots activists. Thank you.
All I need to say is I agree with Jerry.
Great. John C. Smith?
That was Jerry Davis.
Oh, hello. John C. Smith, you know, how do you plan to address this obvious disconnect? Look, there was a little disconnect between the airport commission, apparently, and the city staff. The bottom line here is, we've got to work together. The FAA, they're tough. We've seen what they can do in court. And if we want to really have the kind of airport or not have an airport at all, we all have to work together: citizens, city council, city staff, airport commission. In terms of verifying the accuracy of the presented staff reports, I worked in news for 25 years, and a lot of times I had to find information from people that didn't want to give it to me or gave me the wrong information. So when you're faced with that kind of issue, you find the information, and I'm pretty good at doing it for about 20 years. City staff is not responsive to council directives. What would I do? I'd send them back to work, or find somebody who could do a better job. I think we really should. And in regards to any thoughts about replacing the airport manager, city attorney, or other staff, you know, it's too early. I want to, I don't want to be divisive. I want to be inclusive. Yes, I want to hold people accountable, but I really think we have to work together, and we have to have a united front: Santa Monica, Los Angeles, everybody involved, to make sure that we can determine the future of the airport, or close it if that is the way we want to go. Thanks.
Good, Steve. And then Ted?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Roberto's in line, too, Marty.
Ted, and then John.
Thank you. I'm Steve Doran. You know, being on this side of the microphone with so many very smart, talented people here, it's hard to come up with something that's maybe a little different and something that's going to stick, because everybody has great ideas on this side. That's why you tried to go first. I'll try the next time. But I'll say this: the staff in Santa Monica are very dedicated, professional people. And they don't get the credit that they deserve. So if there's a disconnect between what they're doing and what the community wants, then we have to improve communications with everybody. And I think that that starts from the top down. I believe that if there's strong leadership, that's setting clear examples of what they want, clear directives on how they feel things should go, I think that'll help as it trickles down from the city manager down to its staff. The next question is, how would you verify the accuracy of information presented by the staff reports? Well, the onus is always on me as a council member or any council members there, because we're the ones making the decisions. We have to be accountable and responsible for the actions that we take. So regardless of what the staffs are, regardless of the controversies, we have to do our job and make sure that what we're getting is accurate and good information. And like I mentioned before, leadership starts from the top. It's the city manager's responsibility to make sure that the staff is following through with what they need to do. And that's it. Thank you.
To the table. Were you next before John?
I don't know. Roberto.
Called three people.
Then John.
Okay, Roberto, and then John Man.
Whatever.
Perhaps the disconnect --
Everybody, you have a turn.
You ready?
Yeah.
Perhaps the disconnect between what the public wants -- oh, perhaps the disconnect between what the public wants and what staff recommends is not really the problem. The problem may be that, and this is what I feel may be paranoid, that the staff is not working for the residents here in Santa Monica. There are other forces involved in the background, and I feel that they're directing these staff members to come up with the recommendations that are favorable to developers or other entities. And that's where it comes from, and that's what should be investigated. That's what I feel. Because it can't be that dumb moron, informed. They have college education, they have -- they're smart. There can't be that much of a difference between what we want, what the city council wants, and what they get. Can't be. Thank you.
John Man, Gleam.
I didn't agree with what Jerry said, or Sherry agreeing with him, but I like what Roberto just said. But I want you to allow me to retort to what Martin said about having experience on the council. So far, from what I can tell, this council has let the city down. Previous councils have also been represented by too many special interests. And I have a way to change that. I want to level the playing field. And I want the people of Santa Monica, the residents, to have a really strong voice in city government. And I've been talking about it for over 20 years. Before there was World Wide Web, I've been talking about a virtual town hall on the city website with free Wi-Fi, so people could go online. It's a group mind. That's what you are. When you get together and you hash out ideas, you are much better than the staff and the city council. They're supposed to represent you. If they can't tell the staff what to do, then get rid of the council and elect completely new people to the council who will take charge. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gleam Davis again. I think there's a tremendous amount of distrust between the community and staff and what's going on in our local government. And some of that unfortunately comes from the fact that the issues we're facing at the airport are in a great number of legal issues, which means that a lot of the discussions we have about the airport are in closed session, and they're protected and confidential under the attorney-client privilege. So we can't walk out in public and say, "We just had a 45-minute discussion about X, Y, and Z, and this is our legal strategy, and this is what we're going to do about the FAA." Because of course if we tell the FAA what our negotiating plan is, then we've lost the advantage. I want to look for sticky solutions, and by that I mean solutions that are really going to take. Between now and 2015, if we're going to do something, we need to make sure it's something that not only will happen, but that we won't get an injunction against us and it won't -- we won't have done anything. Similarly, in 2015, we need to make sure that whatever the justification is we have for closing the airport needs to be one that will stand up in the inevitable litigation. I think one of those is the environmental threat that the airport poses, not only to our residents, but regionally in the air -- residents in the region. In terms of staff reports, one of the things I've had a conversation with the manager about is he, the staff needs to remember that the staff reports are not just written for the council, that they are written for the entire community. And that's how we'll verify the accuracy of the staff reports, because if our staff reports don't assume a level of knowledge, and if they're more detailed, then the community will come out and tell us what's wrong with the staff reports. And I think that's the best way to verify the accuracy of the staff reports. I think we have a great city manager in Rod Gould. I don't, I can't honestly speak to how Bob Trimborn is doing his job, but in some respects, I think, given what we're doing and what our plan for the airport is, it's less about who the staff is and more about making sure that we have steps to take actions that are going to be permanent solutions and not the ephemeral solutions that we've gotten all the times before where courts have enjoined the decisions that we've made.
Okay, Richards? Who? Ted?
Well, I think that Frank Gruber hit the crux of the matter here, is that you have to look at the airport staff and imagine what their lives are like. They are vested in the aviation industry. They probably, they go to lunch at Typhoon, Spitfire Grill, they sit down with a pilot and not members of, you know, the anti -- they're not having lunch with Marty Rubin, I'm pretty sure. And so, you know, they clearly come from a bias, you know, whether it's conscious or not, of being pro-aviation. And as Frank pointed out, they're probably also concerned about their jobs, so they're not likely to take a particularly aggressive approach towards strategies for closing the airport or curtailing its operations. I think as a consequence, the visioning process, from my perspective, has been a disaster, starting off from day one, where they suggested the community could come to workshops for these interviews Wednesday at 2:00 p.m. They didn't make any weekend times available. That was incredibly tone-deaf gesture, and proceeded from there to recommend, for instance, Joe Justice's plans to have the flight schools fly elsewhere, be paid to fly elsewhere, which is nothing that anybody in the community came up with. And I think the whole thing has been dealt with in a very poor way. I think the answer is for a council that is aware of the problems of the airport operations. I would argue that since a lot of the council members currently live north of the airport operations, they're not quite in tune with what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And a council that says to staff, and particularly as Tony pointed out, they have to direct, give the direction to the city manager, then gives it to staff, that you need to do a better job, you need to try to understand what the community's needs and goals are and incorporate that in the process that we're going through.
Richard McKinnon. This, like so many other issues this year and this election year, is all about the leadership that the city council provides to the rest of the city council, the staff, and the city. And you either elect people who understand and make clear decisions and bring some sense of progress and a plan to it, or you get what the status quo is. If you get clear leadership, then you're directing and you're leading. If you don't, you're following. We tend to be following in Santa Monica at the moment. So the issue is not about the staff. The issue is about the leadership, the political leadership that's required in this city going forward. And that is why we are all running, and that's the decision you have to make, whether the people in front of you have the qualities to lead over the next four years and also have the qualities to insist that the things that we don't like are closed down or stopped, or that we move ahead with the plan on the 2015 Western extension, or move ahead in closing the airport. They're the decisions that are really important. The staff follow what the leadership insists on.
Terry O'Day.
Yeah, Terry O'Day. So I will return to what Frank started us off on, which is that I do think members of the staff who are executing a job do get into that role and get wedded to the day-to-day. We all do that. Everybody does. And yet, it is easy, as we activists are trying to make change happen, to fall into a role of our own, which is to make the staff an enemy. And I think it's easy to say, "Staff is the problem." I think it's easy to say, "I'm going to close the airport for you." You know, I think it's hard to say, "Here's how this is going to get done," and to put a process together and to run it. And Ted pointed out there have been mistakes along the way. The question is, how do you get to what Gleam was describing, as to the long-term change that needs to happen? And I don't think that the staff, particularly at the highest levels, is in any way under the delusion that this community does not want to see change happen at this airport. And they are looking for the strategies to accomplish it, and it's our job to work together as a community, both as council, as candidates, and as activists, to figure out the best ways to go about them.
Terrence Lederer. I just want to say that I've run a few times, and I've rarely been to one of these forums where everyone agrees so much together on so many points and so few disagreements here. I really like the study that everybody's done, and I like the community activism that Roberto was brought to the table here as the new guy, you know? But if you listen to everybody here, I think we're all kind of singing the same song. It's just that we would like to have an answer that's written in stone. The city has a, it really has a tendency to put things together. So this is a proposed answer, and it's not written rock-solid. We need some rock-solid answers here to face all of this, and I think we're hearing a few of them tonight. I'd like to hear more from Ted and Terry, and I really enjoy Sherry's view on the environment as well, because I think biofuels is really a huge answer to a lot of what's going on here. 15 seconds? Okay. She pulled the stop-up first. Was that a knee-jerk reaction? Yeah, but the biofuels is really that, I think, you know, to sort out, you know, what's going on here. I believe that if we're going to do something with this, Santa Monica needs a green area. It doesn't need a new development at all. Thank you.
Are you ready to move on to question six, the final question for the evening? This is regarding the city council-airport commission relationship. What are your views regarding the airport commission's responsibility? How much weight should be given to recommendations from the airport commission? Why do you think recent commission recommendations are being rebuffed? One minute.
I'll jump in when you're ready, Marty.
Jerry?
Terry? Terry? Terry?
Terry O'Day, going first, Richard. Look, here's an example where, again, something hard is being done. There's some hard work that's happening. The airport commission is coming up with some of the difficult strategies to find, is doing the difficult work of finding strategies that create change. And those are sometimes easily aligned with the path that we're on, with the path that the staff has set forward. Sometimes they're not as well-aligned. And there are some disconnects that are natural in this process, one of which is the access to the litigation strategy of closed sessions, that I think is a real challenge. And it creates a bit of a back-and-forth between the commission and the staff. Another aspect is impatience of the commission and the staff's long-term efforts to effect change at the airport. Some successful, but as we've heard tonight, not successful enough. And that is a dynamic that causes some difficulty. And I think that also is a part of what we're all trying to deal with, is we're looking at both strategies that we need to have in place now to reduce the impacts of the airport and strategies that get us in place to effect change in 2015. And so all those dynamics are at work, and it's important that, I think, we look at what Terrence said. We've got an evening tonight that, as Marty pointed out, is not a debate. This is very much a community forum, and I appreciate Crap putting this together, because this is an opportunity to find solutions.
Frank?
Well, I'll tell you, I urge you all to go to the next commission meeting, and maybe Marty can announce it. And I do want to put a little word out for the late Rick Brown, that serves so great on the commission, too. May he rest in peace. A lot of weight should be given to the recommendations from the airport commission. That's why they're appointed. They are free consultants for the city. And even though the city council appoints them, which is appropriate for any of our advisory commissions, they should all be independent thinkers. And I think our commission is evolving into even more independent thinking, and maybe that's just a natural process because of the community's opposition to the airport. You know, when John was talking about the objectivity of the media, I think that's great, but it's pretty hard to be objective about pollution that's hurting your health. You can't be objective about plane crashes that are looming all over us. There is no objectivity to the noise that's ruining our lives. So I think the commission has a tremendous responsibility, and I think they're doing a good job.
Gleam?
Well, the city charter and ordinances are very clear that the airport commission's responsibility is to advise the city council. How much weight should be given? If we appoint them, we should listen to them. I think what people need to remember is that, for example, when we are discussing airport commission issues in the open, that the airport commission can appoint a member to come and get additional speaking time. They're not limited by the normal two minutes that general members of the public get, and of course, they always can give us information. And as to whether or not the commission recommendations are being rebuffed, again, for example, one of the commissions that, one of the recommendations the airport commission made was for us to look at landing fees. That's on the October 23rd agenda. It's a small step. It's not the step that's going to solve all the problems immediately, but that recommendation came from the airport commission. We'll go over that one, and then we'll look for some more low-hanging fruit. I very much appreciate the work that the airport commission is doing in ferreting out that low-hanging fruit. But, and I know it's frustrating that we haven't just looked at the list and said, "Let's adopt them all," but I guarantee you, they're being looked at, they're being considered, and they are constantly being discussed. And for those that we can do without threat of litigation or worsening our position vis-a-vis the FAA, I think you'll see them coming to council in Suri Adam. Thank you very much.
Frank Gruber?
Sorry. That's the lawyer coming up.
Yeah. Frank Gruber.
Mike?
The -- Well, you know, I'm running for council. There's an adage, the buck stops here, there, wherever. So what I would say from a commission is, I want the commission to be wild and crazy, you know, to be the bad cop, we're the good cop, or something like that. In other words, you want the commission to be out there really pushing the envelope, thinking about things, not necessarily thinking that everything's going to be adopted by the city council, which of course is going to be listening to a lot of other people. So I have to say, I'm not going to say right now that as a council member, I'm going to adopt everything the commission recommends, because I'm running for council. But what I've seen so far are some really great creative ideas and really pushing the element to the city and making these things happen, just like what Gleam was talking about, the low-hanging fruit. I think there's some other fruit that we can reach for. So thanks a lot.
All right. Looks, Don Man hanging up, and then Richard McKinnon, and Tony Vasquez, and John Smith.
Well, I like what --
So what I would say, from a Commission, is I want the Commission to be wild and crazy, you know, to be the bad cop, we're the good cop, or something like that. In other words, you want the Commission to be out there, really pushing the envelope, thinking about things, not necessarily thinking that everything's going to be adopted by the City Council, which of course is going to be listening to a lot of other people. So I have to say, I'm not going to say right now that, as a council member, I'm going to adopt everything the Commission recommends, because I'm running for council. But what I've seen so far are some really great creative ideas and really pushing the element to the city and making these things happening, just like what Gleam was talking about, the low-hanging fruit. I think there's some other fruit that we can reach for. So thanks a lot.
All right. Tom Mann, hang on, and then Richard McKinnon, and Tony Vasquez, and John Smith.
Well, I like what Frank said about being aggressive. I think really, we have to be bad cops. When I was a parole agent, I wasn't a bad cop. And I got...a lot of my clients got over and got away with stuff. If I'm on the council, that's going to change, because I'm very aggressive when it comes to the airport. You know, the FAA is aggressive. They want to steamroll us, and we've got to one-up them. Traffic schools are a good example. Before we even get to 2015, we've got to start tapering off the traffic schools. And, you know, it's not paying them to leave, but, you know, that's what the council wants to do now. The stronger we are, right now, before the election, the council should be doing more than they're doing. We have to be very strong advocates. So if we're being rebuffed, it's because we're not being strong enough.
John C. Smith. The Airport Commission should provide and get the best information for the City Council members, so that they can make the best possible decisions, period. But I think...also think it's also everyone's responsibility. I mean, the fact that you are here tonight on a Thursday, and it's 8:25, a lot of you know so much about the airport and have given me a lot of information that I needed. And I can get...I met somebody two weeks ago at the Jazz on the Lawn, and she knew about...more about the airport than I did. And I was really impressed, and I'm impressed with all of you who come here on a Thursday night and add your input. And if it wasn't for your input, like input from the Airport Commission, City Councils could not make the best possible decisions. I think a lot of weight should be given to Airport Commission. I love what...I love the ideas I saw in the paper about, hey, maybe we should test and see if we can get a flight reduction right now and not wait till 2015. But I know why the City Council said, "Hold on a second. We're kind of cautious." But those ideas need to be considered, and thank you very much.
The Airport Commission's recommendations. Richard McKinnon, the only Australian voice here, just in case.
Yeah, but we're trying to get name before each comment for clarity on the video.
Absolutely. So the Airport Commission's recommendations are strikingly clear, and they provide a very clear guide to the City Council on what it should do. And if it didn't want that clarity, it shouldn't have appointed those people. And the City Council's responsibility is to take decisions in the best interests of the residents of this city. And it seems to me, with the clarity and the strength of the recommendations, that they should now act on them. And if they act, the airport will successively be closed down over the next several years. And I see no reason why you wouldn't act when you get such strong recommendations.
I'll do this really quickly. Ted Winterer, once again, is the name. The Airport Commission's responsibility, as Gleam pointed out, they are by the City Charter to serve the City Council in an advisory role. They're currently doing an outstanding job. I think that, as a consequence, given the amount of hard work and clear-headed thought they've given into their recommendations, they should be given a lot of weight. The last question is, why do you think the recent Commission recommendations are being rebuffed? I don't know. I suspect it has a lot to do with what Gleam and Terry, who sit on the council, suggested, is that because of what goes on in closed sessions, there's things that they know about that we're not privy to. And so I don't know, but I can remind you that if you elect me the City Council, I will know soon, so please do so.
No, the Airport Commission, I think we, you know, it's actually one of the...I think the only Commission we have in the city that really should be taken very serious by the City Council, because it's probably the only Commission where we're talking about people's lives. I mean, just recently, you know, the last plane crash, it happened to be right down the street from my house on Navy and 21st, and it just missed one of my golfing partner's home, actually. It skinned the top of his tree and hit the neighbor right across the street and landed. And luckily, nobody was home, but there was actually people doing a painting...resurface of a painting job on their home and just missed one of the painters. And then the one just, I guess, more recent than that, was the one that happened in West LA where, actually, the pilot died. And these are lives, you know, in the last 20 years since I've been on the council, we've lost several plane, aircrafts, and near misses, and people have actually died because of the airport. And I think we need to seriously take these recommendations and figure out a way to solve this problem. And hopefully, that means that we shut it down or definitely reduce its hours of operation.
Well, I'm for the closure. My name is Roberto Gomez. I'm for the definite closure of the part...of the airport, because when it was originally built, and I don't know the history of it, but it was built for small planes, not big, large planes. And also during that time, there was less population in the area. And also now that we...at that time, we didn't know about the particulates, as far as the small microscopic ones that were affecting people's lives. And soon thereafter, there were jets, and there were a lot more jet landings and takeoffs, and so it increases the pollution. Just for that mere fact, I would close it down. I wouldn't wait to see if we can come up with a negotiation as to cutting down the flights. We should be closing it, period. But the one thing that I would caution is that, as far as the future of the airport, we should create a possible grand jury, a secret one, that no one knows, and no one knows who's in it, so that they can discuss and look at the recommendations by the city and staff to see if it's an equitable one and a fair one for the community. Thank you.
Sherry Davis. I just want to say I have the utmost respect and appreciation for volunteers who spend their time doing the research, doing the advocacy, and serving on all of the Commissions in our city, including the Airport Commission. There are many Commissioners here who spend countless hours, they probably can count them, but dedicating themselves to being experts on the issues and then advising the City Council. And I do pledge to, as a City Council member, that I would absolutely listen and take into consideration, from that perspective, that I know how much work and care and research goes into being a Commissioner.
Okay, so anybody else want to speak on that question? We're ready for closing comments? Let's go around, starting with Terry O'Day. Want to close any comments? Yeah, I want to...open comments were longer than I expected, so instead of many closing comments, 45 seconds.
Forty-five seconds. We're tough. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, I mentioned, thank you for putting this together. You know, this is, in contrast to some of our debates, where they're actually quite fractious. This is an opportunity to talk about our values and the issues around the airport and to find solutions. And I'm really quite impressed with the civility of this group. Should be no surprise coming from Ruben, I suppose. This is my commitment, and it is one that I've made throughout my career, it's to find solutions and to force solutions to environmental problems. The airport, I think, is an issue that is a longstanding and difficult issue in our community, and it's easy to walk into a forum like this tonight and go, "Oh, my goodness, there's a lot of details that's really hard to deal with." And there's a lot of folks who feel very passionately about it. And tonight was an opportunity to really discuss solutions and to feel like we're on common ground and trying to find them.
I want to mention again, a reiterate, a property on Ocean Avenue that was sold for $13.15 million, which is ridiculous. And the reason I'm mentioning that is that we should be very careful as to what happens to the future of the airport. This is a huge, huge piece of land that the developers are, right now, just, you know, what can I say, is salivating that. And I'm saying that we should really create...we should not leave the decision of the future of the airport to the City Council or any other entity. It should be a closed group of people who would decide on it. This way, we can have...we can see and experience possibly, what can I say, the best for the people, because they have no axe to grind or anything to gain from it. And the way it's been here in City Hall, there's, to me, there's a lot of graft going on, a lot of it. A lot of things have happened to me and where I live. The price that was paid for the property at Ocean, without a lot of public input, smells and smacks of corruption. It may be something harsh to say, but I feel it, and I think a lot of you people here do. Thank you.
Sherry Davis. And just want to say thank you for hosting this forum. As Terry said, it's been a very interesting, informative experience. And what it brings to my mind is how valuable it would be for those who do get elected to actually kind of be in the reverse. And I know that's what you do as advocates, but all of the questions that you've asked us, I would love to hear your answers to all of those questions as a way to inform us about your views, so that we're that much more informed. Thank you.
Did the mic get switched off? Is the mic switched off?
Okay, Armin Malconians, again. What we've heard tonight is that the city is working on something. Staff has recommended certain things that are going against the community, that there's closed-door sessions that are legal-based, not to give out any secrets. I don't think it's a secret. I think the FFAA knows that the community wants to shut down the airport. What I haven't seen from the city is any real conversations of what's going to happen with that property, any community involvement with the process. It was left out of the loose. So to me, something just smells wrong. I would 100% support, push, from the beginning, the closing of the airport. Thank you.
Hi, Frank Gruber. First thing I want to start off is by being a real politician and say that when I used to write my columns about the airport, of course, I was there with my own computer, and I didn't talk to that many people. But since running, I've talked to a lot of people in the anti-airport crowd, and you are the nicest, most genteel, kind of most open-minded people involved in Santa Monica politics. And I've been involved with a lot of public stuff in Santa Monica, and you get some...sometimes you get the tar and pitchforks out there, and you guys are great. But I want to add...I want to close with one substantive thing, which is that I'm very excited about this. And, you know, they were talking about funding and all this. I have no doubt that if this land were available, a parks bond would pass in a minute in Santa Monica. It's...this is the generational moment. This is the generational opportunity that we have, and let's not screw it up. Thank you.
I'm Steve Duran, and what I'd like to say is, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and listen to your views tonight. It's been very informative. As I mentioned at the beginning, I believe, which was so long ago, I think I said this, I have two kids, a three-year-old and a one-year-old, and we live under the flight pattern of the airport. And I can tell you, as any father, I'm sure, knows, you care so much about your kid's safety. And I don't know why I'm getting so emotional about that, but I guess I'm a good father. It's so important about their safety, and the airport issue, the patterns of, you know, that fly right over our head, was one of the first things that got me wanting to be involved in doing something to change that. And so while I lack it experience with the politics, I'm a newcomer. I make up for with my enthusiasm and my commitment to doing the best that I can, not only for my kids, but for the residents of Santa Monica. Thank you.
Richard McKinnon. Right round Santa Monica, we're seeing a great deal of pressure on our city, and people are looking to the City Council to provide clear leadership over the next two, four, six, eight, 10 years, as our city changes. This issue is like a lot of other issues. People expect the City Council to take a stand on their behalf. And it's very clear, environmentally, economically, safety, and health issues dictate where we need to go with the airport. The Airport Commission's made the recommendation. Your presence tonight tells us where the residents want to go. It's a very simple equation. The airport has to be on a path to closure, and the City Councilers you elect have to be people determined to do that.
Hi, John C. Smith. In closing, thank you all for coming. I think this was a...it was a great forum. Thank you, Marty. I think, number one, when we're talking about airplanes and airports and closures, I keep going back to the first thing I brought up, which is, I keep thinking about the health and the safety of people living near the airport, and I think that always has to be the number-one concern as we go forward. Speaking of going forward, if and when we finally get the airport closed, I want to make sure that we have a real transparent process, a true transparent process, on what we decide to do with it. I also...people that think, "Oh, it's just going to be a big, beautiful park," there are too many developer-friendly people in Santa Monica, I believe, to let the land go unchanged. And I just want to make sure that we don't have that kind of applied Vista development and trade one problem for another. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Tony Vasquez, and I also want to chime in and thank Martin for putting this forum together. And also, I see the President Zina here from Friends at Sunset Park for her efforts, because she's been real good about informing me about a lot of the issues with the newsletter. And I know that takes a lot of work. But in closing, I really wanted to state that, you know, as a resident and a homeowner in Sunset Park, I am not going anywhere. I bought my home there, because that's where I'm going to retire and hopefully pass on in Sunset Park. But I hope, before that happens, the airport closes before I...
The airport shuts.
Before I do. God willing. But the key thing for me is that, I think it was mentioned earlier, the council that you do elect, you need to hold their feet to the fire, whoever you decide to vote for. Do not let them off the hook, because this airport is not going to close or reduce its hours of operation if you just elect the same old folks or people that say they're going to do something and don't follow through.
Now, I know what the better the fellow Babe Ruth felt like. I just want to thank Marty for this...for doing this. Voters in Santa Monica have a big responsibility this time, because the health and safety of you folks in Los Angeles depend upon what we do. I've been disappointed many times by the council ignoring the truth, justice, and common sense that we've brought as residents to the podium and voted against us. And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen now. I think you carefully pick who you're voting for if you live in Santa Monica. Get people on the council that are going to close the airport if possible, that are going to restrict development of that land if possible. And remember, this is part of a growth issue. That airport attracts businesses, which both Los Angeles and Santa Monica are trying to attract to the region. And as citizens, we need to work together in the future. This is just the beginning of our cooperation to control what happens in West LA and in Santa Monica together. Hopefully, we can control both the Santa Monica City Council and the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you.
Ted Winterer, once and for the last time tonight. Steve stole my whole speech. I was going to talk about how I live in the flight path and have two young kids. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you very much, Steve. But this is obviously an issue with which I have great concern. So let's try another tack. Let's, let's just look at the airport, stepping, setting aside all the environmental and safety concerns, let's look at the airport as a business. Next couple of years, it's going to lose $100,000 to the city of Santa Monica. We're going to put $3 million of capital improvement in that business. If you ran that a business, you'd, that's insane. If you had that business, if you had, Santa Monica Airport as a business, you'd do one of two things. You would close it, because it's a failing business, or you would change its operations. That's what I'm in favor of, changing, closing the airport or changing the operations, so it's a better business for us. I think I've proved on the Planning Commission that I have the interest of the residents of this town at heart, and I've worked hard on their behalf, I'll do the same thing if I'm elected to the City Council. Thank you.
I want to thank Marty. I think he did a great job at being a moderator. My name is Jerry Rubin. JerryPeaceActivistRubin.com, you could go to my website to find out all the other issues too, and go to the other people's websites. Go to the candidate forums. I see Ashley Archibald from the Daily Press, they're going to be hosting a forum at the library on October 15th. The Mirror is going to do it on October 9th, and I think the Legal Women Voters, what is that, October 1st or 2nd? So get out to these forums, and they're going to be putting in comments in all the papers too, and I urge you to read them all and call out the candidates and talk to them. Write letters to the editor, to all the papers. I particularly want to say, I think you should all support Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution. All the neighborhood groups are working on this issue, but they're the only group that's working specifically on the airport issues, and that's why everyone needs to come together in kind of a little coalition, an ad hoc coalition, so we can carry more weight. Ted said it before, it's getting late. Ted and Richard, they work till midnight sometime. Gleam and Terry, they work till midnight sometime, and Frank did when he was on the Planning Commission. So a lot of respect for all the council members and all the good work they do and the time they put in. Sorry about going over time.
Gleam Davis, thank you all for coming out and bearing with us, all these candidates here. I just want to point out that I really want to look for solutions that are going to be permanent solutions to the airport. We have litigated against pilots associations, the FAA, and none of the solutions that have been the subject of those litigations have really been able to stick. That's why the airport's still open, even though there was a council resolution decades ago to close it. So what I want to look for is sticky solutions. And by that, I mean, let's see, can we negotiate? You have to negotiate first and then move to litigation. You can't do litigation first, because if you lose the litigation, you lose all your negotiating leverage. So let's see, can we negotiate the airport operations down to the point where it goes back to being a good neighbor? I doubt we can, but let's give it a try. If we can't, then 2015 will be here soon enough, and then I think we need to consider litigation to close the airport. So I thank you very much all for coming here tonight. My name is Gleam Davis, and I really do hope that you all stay involved. I know you will, because you came here tonight, but please, feel free to come to council meetings and let us hear your voice. Thank you.
Terrence Later, VoteNowForLater.com. I think it's really important that we find some rock-solid solutions and not something that we green this airport for a matter of a few years and find out that we can't afford it, because we've run the budget over the edge. That happened so many times with our current city government. We need to also look at the airspace, that once this restrictions have been lifted off of the airport, how much traffic will replace all that. And biofuels is very important to start like now, with the biofuels. The idea that we could also have, in the endgame, a very nice sports and concert stadium or amphitheater, that, that there's plenty of room for it, there's plenty of room for these kind of activities here, even with the airport here. So thank you very much for everybody coming out, thank you for everybody that put up with us. And now, in closing, you'll see, this is just a taste of what our City Council does, because they go until midnight and 1:00 in the morning, trying to solve the problems of the city. When I'm elected, that's where I'll be.
Jonathan Mann. I get to have the last word and the first word tonight of the candidates. Of the candidates. Allow me to retort. I'm running a paperless and a penniless campaign, and I'm doing that because I really believe in this vision I've had for over 20 years of a virtual town hall, to give the residents of the city a voice in determining policy, not just on the airport, but on everything. And I don't have time to go into detail how it works, so if you have any questions, you can come up and talk to me, or you can, you know, Google me on the internet. The city has half a billion dollars and is going to be running on a deficit. We need, it's not a negotiation, we need to have new blood on the City Council to make this happen. And one of the ways that we can do this is to make this issue go viral on the internet. Thank you very much, Jonathan Mann.
Well, I have to definitely say that this forum of the, this is the fifth one, has been the most informative, best, and it doesn't surprise me, since we're getting a little more experience of doing it, and we're coming closer to 2015, and the percolation has certainly been there and continues to. The community has stepped up beyond belief voluntarily to work on, well, it's not beyond belief, because the issues around Santa Monica, Santa Monica Airport are so extreme that it calls for such action by the part of the community. In fact, where I live, I'm always amazed that we only have, we should have a thousand times more people involved for the health and well-being of themselves, their families and their children, their pets, you name it. The amount of pollution that Santa Monica Airport produces has been measured. I don't want to get rambling too much. Actually, I'd like to, if I might be a little humorous, and say that we're going to endorse, what we want to do to endorse is to make a meld of the best of what all you candidates had to say, because I've heard some really good things. And we can meld your 15 into four outstanding candidates to address these issues through credible strength and integrity and moving forward. That would be wonderful. And I'd even opt, I'd even opt, I think it'd be a good idea to have a nice, small segment on the east side of the airport there for John Mann's medical marijuana. And then during the fire seasons, the northwest L.A. community can be treated to some medicinal fumes rather than the toxic fumes. And actually, too, I don't know, David, do you want to say a word about the Airport Commission, the vice chair of the Airport Commission is here? When is the next meeting?
Next, last Thursday of next month.
Next Friday, everybody.
Okay, all of you candidates, we'd certainly love to see you come out to an Airport Commission meeting. We don't get a lot of attendance from council members since they did away with the liaisons and somebody, I think it was Frank, or no, I'm sorry, it was Tony, suggested that that be reestablished, and I think that's an excellent idea. But you're welcome to come out, and you're welcome to contact us at any time, and we're happy to share ideas with you. And I just want to thank the timekeeper here for such an excellent job.
Kathy Knight always steps up as a longtime environmentalist. I knew if I asked her, she'd probably accept. I felt guilty about doing it, but I couldn't think, I knew you would do it. Thank you.
Clearly has experienced having sex.
As we said, there are a number, or maybe I didn't say, there are a number of community groups all around the airport that are dealing with this issue. The neighborhood councils in Los Angeles, in Santa Monica, of course, Friends at Sunset Park has been working on this before Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution was founded. And now CASMAT, John Fairweather, they're doing a very worthwhile petition to direct city on the future path at the airport, beyond the vision process. John?
Hello? Thanks, Marty. I don't want to say much. My name's John Fairweather of CASMAT, and we are doing an online petition in support of the Airport Commission recommendations. And you've heard a lot of people talking about the Airport Commission recommendations tonight. They really are a framework to begin doing something serious about Santa Monica Airport. And so, if you want to go online and vote, there's some flyers here, the mall votes we get, the better. www.casmatt.org.
C-A-S-M-E-T?
C-A-S-M-E-T.
So Santa Monica residents can move forward with directing City Council how to direct staff with their directives, which was one of the things I wanted to bring out at tonight's meeting, because regardless of, seriously, regardless of the legal aspects that we're discussing, think about it, where do you get off, and I mean this generally, from the FAA, from the president on down, where do you get off saying, well, we have the legal right to put toxic emissions to, of any form, jet, lead, and aviation gasoline, and safety threats over a community, what in essence is for the benefit of the 1%? Make no question about it. I don't usually say that, but that's how strongly I feel about it. It is the 1% that is keeping this airport open.
Jets, occupied.
Well, yeah, occupied. Well, we're, certainly, occupied is something, that whole thing needs to, to be fertilized in a good way all around, because if the 1% is basically mostly interested in their bottom-line dollars growing, even though they don't need it, at the cost, and just getting back to Santa Monica Airport, it is, and it's going to be a national issue. I was, just became a member of the LAX Community Noise Roundtable, and they spoke about it there. They have FAA members there. FAA members that I see, they're not that bad. Stephen May, he's, he's pretty good. And they have a huge problem. Think about all the planes they've got to fly around. But you look at Santa Monica Airport and you say, okay, we're going to keep the, we're going to keep it as a benefit for the 1%? Because who believes that if the jets weren't coming to the airport, there'd be a strong interest in keeping the airport open? And for, as far as the emergency response, definitely one would consider emergency response. In the event of an earthquake runway, we don't know if it'd even be secure, and most emergency response is done by helicopter. So helicopters could land, so that argument, which in my mind is probably the best argument, it's not really a good argument. The airport was there first, well, hey, you know, let's go to that argument. Let's give it all back to the Indians. I'd be satisfied with that. Okay, let's, let's close it on an up note and a laugh, and thank you all for coming out. I'm honored.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for sure.